Okay. With that, I would like to call the regular meeting of the Genoa Charter Township Board for November 17, 2025, to order at 6:37 PM. I apologize for the tardiness. The special meeting beforehand ran over by a little bit, so apologize for those of you that weren't here for knowing that that was a bit of a long meeting. So with that, I would ask that you stand and join me for the invocation, please. Heavenly Father, as this is our last meeting before the coming holiday, we want to give thanks. During the meeting, we will have discussions and make decisions, but we never want to lose sight of our gratefulness to You. Thank You for each person in this meeting and the unique talents and perspectives they bring. We thank You for the opportunity to gather together and work towards a common goal. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
[inaudible]
Clerk Susie, may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly.
Walker.
Here.
Reiber.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Susie, here.
Hovarder.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Okay. With that, I would like to open the call to the public at 6:38 PM.
Good evening. My name is Denise Polachella. I reside at 4200 Sweet Road, and I'm a marijuana lawyer. There's legislation pending in the legislature, in the Michigan Legislature right now, which would cap the number of marijuana dispensaries based on population. I'm helping draft and amend the legislation, so it's taking a little long. It will probably take effect January 1st, 2026. I've got some concerns that the way that the legislation is currently worded, it would permit the MRTMA, which is the Michigan Regulation Taxation Marijuana Act, it legalized recreational marijuana establishments, sorry. It would allow MRTMA to potentially override municipal caps and municipal bans on marijuana dispensaries because it's state law. We don't have a marijuana zoning ordinance here. I've sent one in. I've drafted over 30. About 22 of them have been adopted by different municipalities. I highly, highly, highly please recommend that you get on this now. The people that brought the ballot initiative, the ballot question for marijuana dispensaries last year accidentally screwed up and didn't get on the ballot, they will not fail again. And if we are not careful, we will end up with either more dispensaries than we want or have them in places that we really don't want. So please, please take this up. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, Denise. Yes, Doc, go ahead.
Is that like a PA 233 of pot stores, basically?
I'm sorry?
Like the Public Act 233 that says the MPSC can override local rule?
I don't know if it's going to. All I can tell you is that in most cases, and this is the question for the future, which is why I would prefer to get on it, right? In a lot of cases, MRTMA overrides the municipal law because it's state statute. Now, it doesn't, it caps by population. What I'm saying is, when there's a conflict in state law and municipal law on something, a lot of times the state law will win. I don't know what's going to happen in this case because the law's not drafted, it's not finalized yet. However, if we carefully zone marijuana dispensaries where we would be okay having them if this does pass, then we won't be stuck having them anywhere. Correct? So I'm just, I'd like to, part of the reason, actually, there were several, but part of the reason that we did elect a new board was to try to, and one of our goals was to try to get ahead through ordinances, master plan ordinances, some of the problematic development concerns that we see coming, instead of being reactionary. This is something we can actually do something about ahead of time.
That's why I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, and it's not particularly difficult to do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Hello, my name is Mark Jones. I live at 1084 Schumong Drive. I just wanted to bring up two positive things. I want to tell you how much I enjoy the MyGenoa app. It's timely, it's relevant, I look for it for communication means, what's happening with roads, things in the community, so thank you. I also wanted to comment about the master plan survey. I'm one of who's created and administered a lot of surveys in my career. I thought it was absolutely excellent, timely, relevant, asked the right questions. I think it really addressed the needs of our community. I really liked it was done in sort of the good, better, best format, and I felt honored to participate and actually complete it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for participating in the survey.
Gordon Sewell, 5238 Old Hickory Drive. And I just wanted to get this into the record. This is, people probably didn't get to notice this, this was published on the WHMI webpage, and it was an open letter to the township residents by Kevin Spiker, and I think it should be made public, and I'd like to enter it into the record tonight. Excellent, excellent letter.
Thank you. Okay. Did anyone who, is there anyone who didn't sign up that would like to speak at Call to the Public? There will be a separate hearing for the SAD, where you can speak if you have specific questions on that. Okay, at this time, then, I would like to close the call to the public at 6:44 PM. I will entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
Kevin, I have, I make a motion, I need to make a motion to amend the special meeting minute. It's item number three. Request to approve November 5th, 2025 special meeting minutes. I make a motion to amend page 16 of our packet by adding, it's just for clarification, and I'll state this so the board can hear, picking up at the bottom of page 16. There you go, thank you. Moved by Hunt, supported by Walker, to nominate Rick Susie. That was the motion that was seconded. Hunt requested coaching from council and changed motion to appoint.
Not sure coaching is the correct word, but for clarification here, in order to change the minutes, I think we need to move them to the regular agenda.
That would be the proper way to go. So just.
Make a motion to move this item to the regular agenda, then please.
Remove.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second on approving the consent agenda with item number three removed and added to the regular agenda. Is that a correct restatement of the motion?
Number two.
He's, you mentioned the special meeting minutes. Are you, are you saying number two?
Number three.
Number three is the special meeting minutes.
The other one. Number three.
Okay.
The approval of items one and two. I'll support that.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, did we, did we approve the motion to move number three into the regular agenda?
That was your motion, move item number three to the regular agenda.
Those in favor?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. I would now entertain a motion regarding the amended regular agenda.
I move approval of the regular agenda with items number three through nine.
Second.
I have a motion, I have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, did we, did we approve the motion to move number three into the regular agenda?
That was your motion, move item number three to the regular agenda.
Those in favor?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. I would now entertain a motion regarding the amended regular agenda.
I move approval of the regular agenda with items number three through nine.
Second.
I have a motion, I have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Action item number three is the request to approve the November 5th, 2025 special meeting minutes.
Thank you. I'll restate, I make a motion to amend the special meeting minutes and to update the text towards the bottom of page 16 on our packet. I'll read, moved by Hunt, supported by Walker, to nominate, switched words there, to nominate Rick Susie. Next, Hunt requested coaching from council and changed motion to appoint.
Could we change coaching to advice, please? Advice from council.
It was clarification is what I asked for.
It was actually clarification.
Clarification, please. Sorry, Patty. To clerk and upon his appointment, he shall be added to all township bank accounts. Please add this prior to the vote.
That was not part of my motion.
I think a lot of this needs to be verified by reviewing the video. I'm not super comfortable with these changes.
I think it was. You made a motion and then by appointing him to give him access to the bank accounts or however you said it. If we need to clarify, then do I need to just submit something in writing tomorrow or later tonight or something?
Actually, I would.
Could we table the approval of these minutes to the next meeting?
I'm not comfortable with this much amendment without actual review.
If you approve the minutes, that's the end of.
Exactly.
So we should table it until the next meeting?
I believe we have to.
You can't table.
The next meeting.
Pardon me?
I believe the law requires that we approve the minutes at the next meeting.
Just this meeting.
But you're correct, but the lawyer's here, so I will defer to him.
So would you agree that Hunt requested clarification from council and changed motion to appoint? Okay. The rest of the verbiage, I just picked up right there. I would like to add in that I'm not gonna, I just want to add then a sentence after the word "bank accounts," ending in "bank accounts." Prior to the vote, Reiber asked whether other nominations were permitted. Inspire stated no, depending on the outcome of the vote, there may be no other nominations. That was right, right?
That's the correct statement.
That's my requested amendment.
Do you have all that, Patty? Okay, take your time. Okay. So we have some amendments to the minutes. Those ones I am comfortable with without review. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns on the amendments?
I saw one too, but I can't find it. It was from Jim Carpenter's, it was his statement, but I can't find it. Was there two sets of verses in that?
We already approved November 3rd minutes.
Page 15.
Yeah, this is page 15 of the packet.
Two thirds down. Is that it, Jim Carpenter?
Yep.
That still smells like I hardly read it. Hold on. Was that page he's on, is 15?
Of the packet, yes.
It's page 15 of the packet, yeah.
It's on the screen, if that helps, Candy.
Yeah, yeah, he said.
What's that?
It's his second sentence, it says, "He is concerned that the township hall is an environment conducive to get work done," but actually, he said "not conducive to get work done."
I think he was expressing concerns as to whether or not it was conducive.
Yeah.
It was a question more so than a statement.
Correct.
I did not take that thorough notes on his discussion. I don't write word for word. I trust that Patty heard that correctly. I'm not super comfortable making changes to a public, a comment from the public without actually hearing the change, especially when it's coming from one of us, if that person was suggesting.
Well, that's fine, but since he says concerned, that's what made me think it was not. Because he wouldn't have said, oh, it's, you know, whatever. Okay.
Candy, do you want to, do you want to make that amendment?
I don't, I can't, I don't have any facts, I can't pursue it. I just, I think he said not, it's not conducive to get work done. But it's okay, it's not a deal breaker for me.
That's kind of what he's saying, it would be a double negative to put "not" in there. He may have used that language, I don't know.
His point is definitely made, so I'm comfortable leaving it at this.
Okay.
Can I make a friendly amendment to Bill's amendment request?
Sure.
Regarding the motion and the support, prior to the roll call vote, there was discussion regarding the resumes that were received. I think that should be added.
No. Because I think Robin said something like, you know, "I've examined everybody's resumes and finding that they're all in one package," so it was, I think, before her nomination.
It is, it says, right before the motion, it says, "Miss Hunt reviewed all of the resumes and believes that Mr. Susie is the most qualified." So I think we've already got it there.
We're okay?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay. With that, Patty, do you have all that?
Are we doing Ms. Waters' amendment or not?
We are not.
We are not, okay. Yes, I'm all set, sir.
Okay. With that, any further discussion?
I need this, I do not have a support.
That's true. I would entertain a motion on the amended minutes.
Support.
I have a motion, I have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Roll call vote, since we're amending minutes.
No.
The same?
No, you can do it by vote.
Okay, my apologies.
Okay.
Don't want us to live.
Okay. Action item number four is a public hearing on the proposed Forest View Estates Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project. The initial call will be only for property owners within Forest View Estates, and I will open that call at 6:55 PM. So anyone who from Forest View Estates here that would like to speak regarding the project, please do so now.
Will it require a comment from us?
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's not required, but if you, if you want to, you can.
Yeah, so you don't have to comment if you would like to?
If I may, just the fact that our subdivision is out front service, 5011 Old Hickory, we're the first subdivision west of Bauer Road, original, and the road, our streets were put down in 1970, and we've had two overlays, mainly just ceiling. It's in very difficult shape right now, reflects on the doctrine, actually, to have these streets existing the way they are, and our residents have agreed to, you know, pay for part of it, and we appreciate the township's consideration for it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else, residents of the subdivision, would like to speak?
Again, Gordon Jewell, 5238 Old Hickory, and I want to thank personally Kelly for the work that she did in helping us to make this presentation for the request. As, and as one of the oldest subdivisions west of Bauer Road, one of the originals, I believe, we've watched the school buses pick up our children 50-plus years ago. There's a number, and now we're watching the school buses pick up some of the new. We have one of the brand-new residents that was just born here this month, right next door to me, so that the whole subdivision is undergoing a transformation. There's a number of us that are octogenarians, and it was funny because one of the people in the, in the sub asked a group of us in our 80s, "Why would we want to do this?" And we, the general consensus was, "We're proud of where we live, and we take pride in wanting to make it look nice." And I added, "I hope to make the last payment in 2035."
We're there with you. Thank you. Any other residents wish to speak? Okay, at this time, I will close the call to the property owners at 6:58 PM, and I would open up the call to the general public, if any general public has any questions or concerns regarding the Forest View Estates Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project. Seeing none, I will close the call to the public on that item. Action item number five is a request for approval of Resolution Number Three, approving the project cost estimates, special assessment district, and causing the special assessment role to be prepared for the Forest View Estates Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project Summer Tax 2026.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to give a brief run-through of this project, so as indicated by our resident, this, the roads in their neighborhood are older than I am and are in very, very bad shape, and so I worked cooperatively with them on putting together a road improvement plan. These are roads owned by the Livingston County Road Commission, so the Livingston County Road Commission prepared an estimate of cost. We held an informal meeting with the residents. The total project cost for this is $375,000 plus $4,000 for administration costs. In accordance with our current policy, the township would contribute $76,500 to these roads because they are public roads, which brings the total cost to the citizens at $302,500. There are 51 parcels in the proposed district. We have received petitions from over 60% of those property owners requesting this district to move forward, and so tonight, we're asking you to consider Resolution Three and Resolution Four to continue moving the project forward to a second public hearing, which would be held at the next meeting, if approved this evening.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Any further questions or discussion needed?
I'm good.
At this time, I would entertain a motion on Resolution Number Three.
I move to approve Resolution Number Three of the project estimate cost, special assessment district, causing the special assessment role to be prepared for the Forest View Estates Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project, Summer Tax 2026.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? At this time, I would ask Clerk Susie for a roll call vote, please.
Reiber.
Yep.
Hunt.
Yes.
Susie, yes. Hovarder.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, action item number six is a request for approval of Resolution Number Four, acknowledging the filing of the special assessment role, the scheduling of the second hearing for December 1st, 2025, and directing the issuance of statutory notices for the Forest View Estates Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project, Summer Tax 2026.
Yeah, I move to approve Resolution Number Four, acknowledging the filing of the special assessment role, scheduling the second hearing for December 1st, 2025, and directing the issuance of statutory notices for Forest View Estates Road Improvement.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll call, please, Clerk Susie?
Hunt.
Yes.
Susie, yes. Hovarder.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Reiber.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes. Okay. And just so everybody knows the way it works, that December 1st hearing will be to, if somebody wants to dispute whether or not they should be included in the assessment district. The project has been approved, that is more, who's going to pay for it? Okay, moving on. Action item number seven is the consideration of a request for a change to the employee contribution rate for the Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO Plan for the 2026 Benefit Plan Year as presented by Human Resources Manager Kim Lane.
Hi.
Thank you, Kim.
Good evening. I brought this to your attention because once we approved the benefits at the October 6th meeting for 2026, it came to our attention that we uncovered a number of significant negative impacts that would happen to the employees if we restricted them to the Blue Care Network Point of Service Plan. We didn't actually restrict them, but what we did was, we, we had proposed, well, I had proposed that we have the employees pick up the difference between the Point of Service Plan and the PPO, the current PPO Plan. It came at a huge increase for the employees, and as you can see in the, on the chart, what we had currently approved, it would take a family contribution from $260 a month to $603 a month. That is a huge impact on employees if they chose to stay with the PPO. The negative impacts are that the Blue Care Network Point of Service Plan has a significantly smaller network than we thought, and a number of employees with certain medical conditions would lose their physicians that they currently have. The drug formulary is also different for Blue Care Network, which means that medications that would be covered under the PPO Plan may not be covered under Blue Care Network, which would force them to change medications. And then utilizing the Point of Service Plan, though it's less expensive, we will be requiring the employees to submit receipts and explanations of benefits in order to get the reimbursements that they currently get without having to do that, it happens behind the scenes for the PPO Plan. And the reason for that is because Blue Care Network uses their own health reimbursement company called Health Equity, and they don't cover things the same way that EHIM, the current HRA, uses. So those are the negative impacts. So what I'm proposing is that in the past, we've always done a 10% employee contribution for. for the P P O plan. We moved that ten percent to the, um, the Blue Care Network Point-of-Service Plan, but I'm proposing that we change from the, what's currently approved and the high, uh, the high cost for the P P O plan to be ten percent of the premiums. So that's going to mean that the township would fund an additional thirty-five thousand, um, of the employee, rather than, you- the employees would pay thirty-five thousand dollars less. So it would go from employees contributing seventy-six thousand down to forty-one thousand. And that would, that would be their new employee contributions. So instead of going for a family from two sixty to six hundred and three, it would go from two sixty to three hundred and twenty-five.
So that's also on the assumption that everybody stays on that?
Yes, that is the assumption that everybody stays on the P P O plan.
And some might elect to go on the-
It would be something less than that. And I don't really have a good ability, because we've never offered two plans before. So I don't have a good idea on how many people would just elect the Blue Care Network plan, and they're okay with the smaller network and the less, um, the less employee contribution.
When you brought this up before, I suggested that you contact the county and get involved with them.
And we did, and it was too late for us to do that for this year. That'll have to be something that we investigate next year. They are already in the throes of open enrollment and getting it complete for this year. So we could not piggyback on their plan. That was a, um, email that we received from Nick Fiani.
No other, uh, local municipality partners with the county? So that was outside-the-box thinking, which is great, but-
I know, yeah, it's-
Have to, have to jump on it a little sooner. I, there is no guarantee the pricing would be different.
Right.
No guarantee the plan would be the same, so, I mean-
But you stayed before, when, before M H O G left, it was significantly less because they were younger. Right?
Well, their plan, so the M H O G plan stayed the same, and the township plan went up because we, we separated those two plans, yeah.
So, Kim, I, I have a question, uh, and thank you for staying in touch with me via email.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was, uh, and, and I'm going to forget it, but you'll know it. There was a pool of money that employees contribute to, I don't know if it's once a year and, uh, or out of their paychecks, but it's, it had, uh, it had about fifty thousand dollars i- i- in, in the piggy bank-
Yes.
For that. And, and this increase here is thirty-five thousand. So my, I guess my question is, that piggy bank is, is available there.
It is.
And it just builds as people continue to work and put money into it, so-
The way that it works is, um, E H I M is, is, um, is our, uh, health reimbursement account. And what it does is, it self-funds the portion of our high deductible health plan, um, to make it, um, more of a whole, uh, and cohesive plan. So we have a high deductible health plan with a health reimbursement account behind it. So what we do is we estimate every year, based on an average of the last five years, what we think our health reimbursement account expenses will be for the following year. Um, if we overestimate, anything that's an additional to that budget gets put in this, um, rainy day fund, sort of thing.
That's money coming-
But that's really money that is meant to cover if we under-budget the E H I M plan.
So doesn't this insurance policy, whatever it is he have going, make it so they don't, none of the employees have a deductible? They don't have a deductible to meet, do they?
There is a deductible, but it, right, the H R A covers the deductible.
So that's super good. Hardly anybody has that, right? I've never heard of that till you brought that up at a meeting.
Um, it is, it, it-
Because most families have deductibles they have to meet.
Most families have deductibles. We did look at, um, instituting a deductible of like two hundred and fifty or, for a single, five hundred for family. And the cost difference between what we're doing right now and implementing a, um, two hundred and fifty, five hundred dollar deductible was about one percent difference in cost. And we can actually lower our H R A budget and make up that difference.
The county has a similar plan in speaking with Nick about how their thing operates. So, um, I, I don't know other municipalities' plans, I'm not in those, but it's, uh, it's actually pretty interesting the way it was funded. Um, they took a high deductible plan and then took the savings they got from taking the high deductible plan and created the E H I M to cover those deductibles. So it was an overall savings to the township by doing it that way.
And over the last several years, those people that are paying higher deductibles, they're, they're seeing increases that are way beyond what we're seeing.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
It has actually, it has actually really benefited, um, the township cost-wise to continue because over the last several years, our costs have remained fairly low.
It's worked out very well, and I appreciate all the effort.
Well, I'm sure. It's very good.
Thank you for all the work you've done on this, Kim. Yeah, thank you, Kim.
So I, I do have a question, Kim. You, you referenced E H I M.
Mm-hmm.
And you said that that's a result of an estimation on, on what it's going to cost us. So everybody, it gets reevaluated every year.
Mm-hmm.
Could go up, could go down.
Yeah.
So obviously, for next year, knowing what we know now, that E H I M, you're going to predict higher costs all the way around, right? So the contribution that the employees make into this piggy bank, right? You think it's going to hire costs, so you're going to be making more deposits into this piggy bank.
That piggy bank isn't coming from employees' money.
Where does that E H I, I thought it, I thought the employees-
No, whereas, it, the E H I M is a self-funded plan.
Where does the money come from?
So it's a combination, um, self-funded would mean that the township pays those costs. What we're charging employees is ten percent of that. So the township covers ninety percent, employees pay ten percent of the cost that goes into that, um, that H R A self-funded portion of the plan. It's just like the premiums, it's, it's considered, look at it like, um, like a, a separate health pla- it's two health plans that are married together. So we've got the Blue Cross plan, and we have the H R A plan. And employees pay ten percent of the premiums of the cost of both of those plans.
So in, in our budget, we have our insurance line item. Uh, Genoa's going to spend X amount of dollars for insurance. The premiums, as well as that transfer to a reserve account, just to have some savings set aside, all come out of that line item.
Mm-hmm. And that would be in the event that one or two employees have excessive health issues or an accident or something that would cost and, and require, you know, a, a maximum use of those high deductibles. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
What is the deductible?
It's confusing. It's confusing.
Hub puts that number together based on previous experience of claims, and then they can move it up or move it down based on expectations of what next year's claims are going to be. It's very hard to predict the future, but, um-
What is the deductible on our healthcare plan now?
Um, it's a four thousand, eight thousand on the healthcare plan.
How much?
Four, four thousand, eight thousand.
Okay, so this is-
So four thousand, single, eight thousand for family.
This is the part that's covering that.
Yes.
Yes.
Got it.
So they don't have a deductible?
Well, they do.
Individuals.
They do, but we cover.
But it's covered by the H R- No.
They pay ten percent of it.
They just paid ten percent of the premiums of the plan.
That's a pretty good, pretty good deal.
Mm-hmm.
So what are you asking from us?
I'm asking, um, in this, these two columns that are on the screen, what we approved. I'm asking to reduce the employee contribution for a family from six hundred and three down to three twenty-five. For a two-person, it would go from four eighty-one to two sixty. And for single, it would go from two oh-two to hundred and eight.
That is for a person that chooses to stay on the current plan?
On the P P O plan.
Which is better than the other.
Yes.
But it also costs them more.
It appears as though, whenever we said the other plan seemed, the P P O seemed too good to be true.
It was.
That actually did actually work out to be the case.
But there's people that may take it, you know, if their doctors are on-
I have found personally that my people are included.
Yeah.
So I don't, I plan to-
And they may prefer.
To switch.
Um, just for, so that you can see where we're at, I did, I did prepare, like, an extra sheet, if you would like it, just to show where the Blue Care Network, um, you want me to bring this up?
Yeah, please.
Um, I did give it to Kelly, too, just in case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just see where the Blue Care Network fell.
Thank you, Kim. Uh, do you have another one?
Yeah, I do.
That's okay, I'll give that to Candy. Oh, do you need that?
Well, I can leave it to Stephen.
Okay. Oh, okay.
That's mine.
We may have enough. Do you have a second one there?
I've got more than one.
Perfect.
Yeah? So you can see the difference on this chart, um, that if they select the, the P P O plan, um, the single cost for, uh, what I did was I looked at several different percentages that we could consider for employees. Um, the one all the way to the right is the one that I am, uh, I'm sorry, the left is the one that I am proposing. Uh, and that would be ten percent of the premium. There's other considerations that we could do. We could do twelve and a half percent. I looked at fifteen percent. Um, currently, the difference between ten percent of the P P O would be, um, three hundred and twenty-five for a family, where it would be two hundred and ninety-five if they take the Blue Care Network. So that still is a, is a, you know, a hefty, a healthy difference between, um, a family taking the P P O, they'll have to still pay a higher amount than the Blue Care Network, um, of two ninety-five per month. Their cost per pay would only increase by sixteen dollars if they go to the lower, um, Blue Care Network Point-of-Service Plan. Their cost would increase by thirty dollars per pay for a family. So it's doubled. The per pay, per pay it is.
Well, again, thank you for looking at all of this because it is very overwhelming to me. So I'm glad you do it, not me.
It's a lot of numbers.
Insurance hurts my head.
Anybody have any further questions for Kim? Or comments?
Just, just one, Kim, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, you had sixty-six, on the, on the, right, okay, yeah, it's still up on the screen. Um, I'm looking at the middle column, the blue one, it says, P P O, employee contribution currently approved.
Mm-hmm.
And then for family, it says six oh-three.
Right.
Okay. Then here, we have, uh, again, family. I don't see the six oh-three anywhere on this chart. Is that something higher than fifteen percent, like forty percent, fifty percent?
No, it's, uh, yes, yes.
What it is, is they're paying the difference?
That's the difference, the total difference between the Blue Care Network plan and the, the, um, uh, the P P O plan. That's the entire difference. In, in ten percent of the premium plus whatever it would cost to bring, they would have to pay the difference between what Genoa Township is subsidizing, has agreed to subsidize for the Blue Care Network plan and the cost of the P P O plan.
We did that under the guise, it was explained to us that really the only difference was you had to choose, you had to name a primary care physician. Um, and almost all the doctors were the same, ninety-some percent. Um, we have actually kind of found that maybe that's not exactly a true picture.
And doctors that are currently in the Blue Care Network plan, um, there's, there's a number of them that are not planning on being in the Blue Care Network plan as of January first.
And you explain, that's because this guy buys that guy, this guy, and we have very small numbers of employees.
Mm-hmm.
So not, not our control.
Right.
So this is balancing out. It, it's going to make it a little more affordable if somebody has to stay with the current plan because of either the medicine that they're on or, uh, the doctor that they use. We have no way to know that information. We, we do not know, uh, our provider doesn't know.
Not allowed to go ask them.
Yeah.
Well, so I, maybe I missed it, but it was at the beginning of your, of your presentation, Kim, was, so, so there was a cost, we found out that the health, healthcare costs were going like crazy because of buyouts and, you know, people moving this. So you came to the board, you asked for an increase, and then you found out after the original approval that there were some assumptions made that were inaccurate.
Yes.
Okay.
The morning after it was approved.
Well, it was assumptions, and it was also, um-
Information given.
Information that was given by, um, you know, our, just the- I actually talked to Hub, and I actually talked to, um, our, uh, retirement planning broker, who also does, he does, um, benefits, too, for different companies. He just doesn't do that for us. Um, he is our broker for retirement planning only. But, um, you know, just independently asking, say, hey, what kind of success have you had going to the Blue Care Network plan? And they haven't seen a whole lot of, um, you know, controversy, you know, or upset among employees for going to the Blue Care Network plan. Um, but that was in groups where their doctors went over, and, you know, they weren't, they didn't have to change the doctors, they didn't have to change their drug for, you know, their drug plan or anything. Um, we asked our employees to go ahead and take a look and find their doctors on the plan. And, uh, when they did, there was a number of them with health conditions, um, that couldn't find their doctor or couldn't get their drugs approved, or they would have to change medicines and that sort of thing. And we felt like that was a significant enough, um, impact, negative impact on the employees, that it made sense to see if we could sort of bridge the gap between the P P O plan and the B, the Blue Care Network plan. A little bit more.
I think we need to consider what the taxpayer would say, because they're actually the ones paying for this. You know, would they think it's a good idea to absorb all these costs? You know, times are tough for everybody. Everybody's costs are high. How much, how much are you looking at asking us to pay?
Thirty, uh, thirty-five thousand, only, uh, thirty-five thousand additional to what is already approved, um, only if every single employee chose the P P O plan. It's going to come in something less than that.
What do we already, what are we already willing to contribute? Can you tell me that?
Um-
We already agreed to cer- a certain amount already, right?
Yeah, it's, we already agreed to charging the employees seventy-six thousand.
Candy, can I ask, when you say you want to see what the township residents think?
I just think we have to consider it.
We absolutely need to consider, and that's our place up here.
Yeah.
But when you say we want to see what they think, that's like we want to go out and do a questionnaire.
No, I just, I think we need to consider it. You know, what if some guy's barely can make his house payment or his car payment? You know, he's going to think, what? You know? I, I wonder, I just want to consider it, that's all.
So in that case, if that was an employee, would we want him to pay a substantial more or try to get it closer to what he's already paying? So this is saying, we're going to try to keep it at that lower rate. It's still going to go up for them significantly.
Drastically.
Yeah, twenty-seven percent. It's still going up twenty-seven percent.
On their end, anyway.
I know.
You know?
So we're still, I'm, what I'm proposing is that we take the employee contribution down from a hundred and thirty-five or a hundred and forty, but, or a hundred, I don't even know what that percentage is, over a hundred percent, down to twenty-seven percent. It's still a high increase, twenty-seven percent higher.
This will affect the people who, either their doctor doesn't participate in the Blue Care Network, or they're on a medicine that isn't part of that. We were kind of led to believe that that wouldn't be the case. But it has now changed, so how, how much of a burden do you want to put on somebody to maintain their healthcare? Uh, and thinking from the taxpayer's perspective, um, if they were in those shoes, I don't think they would be super stoked to get hit with that bill either.
Mm-mm.
Um, you do need to treat your employees well to retain quality employees. No two ways about it.
Kim, I don't want any personal information revealed, not for you. But, uh, let's say, and I'm looking at this, so, in your estimation, what percentage of an employee's paycheck goes towards their medical insurance? With what was currently, what, before it was approved, then we approved to help fund some of it, we thought we were funding it well enough, right? So the last percentage of theirs, and now, you know, Candy's saying, so this would even be, I don't know what, I don't know.
I think I know what you're trying to say, yeah.
What I'm trying to say is I, I don't know what our wages are, and it's not my business to know what our wages are, but if somebody's paying 50% of their wages just to cover the healthcare.
The problem is you would have to know whether they're single, two person, it's a tough question to answer. I mean, there's no way to truly know. We don't know who's a family, who's a two person, who's a single.
And the wages are all over the place too, so it, that's a hard, that, I'm not sure I could answer that intelligently.
But when you're looking at, uh, just say just a family for the heck of it, and say, the family was paying 260, correct?
Mm-hmm, per month.
And we're talking about bringing them to 325 if we approve this extra 35,000.
Right.
We're gonna pay 35,000 more, they're gonna pay 40, $65 a month more.
Per pay, actually.
Per pay. No, is it?
No, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
Is the 603 what we currently have approved right now?
No.
Yes, yes.
Oh, the 603.
Yeah. So what we currently approved was asking the employees who want to stay on this plan to be willing to pay like 150% more than what they're currently paying.
What is currently approved is if, if you want to keep the same plan, you have to pay 100% of the difference from the plan we've switched to, to that plan. We're suggesting potentially to help out, because there are a few people that have to stay on that plan due to either their doctor or their medicine, that they still pay more, but we help them to stay on that same plan to avoid that hardship.
What would 50% be then? What if we said we'd go another 50%?
50% of what?
That wouldn't be enough of what you're asking here? That wouldn't be enough?
Well, I, I, I proposed like a 10% premium, 12 and a half percent or 15%.
Oh, I see, I see.
I think Kim has come up with a good solution to ease the hit without putting too much additional burden on the taxpayers. I think it's a good compromise.
And there's still a buy-up
Yes.
to staying on the PPO plan.
Yeah, $65 for a family, a month more to stay on their own.
As opposed to, um, it's only going up from 260 to 295, it'd be $35 a month if they stay, go to the Blue Care Network plan.
So I was looking at the 35,000 in the scheme of our budget, and it turns out that $35,000 is .0046 of our budget, less than half of 100%, by the way.
It's, it's a, it's a relatively light increase to the township budget when it's a very heavy increase to the employees.
Question, when is our next budget review up, for a year?
February, March?
You will see the first draft of the budget at December 1st.
And it has to be approved by February.
When does this, when does this take effect?
Two weeks.
A week from Monday.
That is a little bit of a problem.
We have to get this approved tonight because we've gotta do open enrollment this week.
What I'm asking, what I'm trying to get around to is if the township taxpayer, everybody sitting right here, is gonna chip in a little bit more, you know, for the, for the employees to, to maintain their level of healthcare and their doctors and their medicines and so forth, I, I would think in fairness to the taxpayer, that when we look at something for next year's budget, that $35,000 has to be come out of somewhere.
No, absolutely. I know we're, we're not running at a deficit, but it's fine.
I'm just trying, I mean, I would think, and I'll tell you my opinion, if I was, if I were a resident here and, you know, I, I'm gonna be paying, you know, in taxes, it's what it's gonna come out to be, okay, fine, we're gonna pay another $35,000, but I need to see a, a reduction in paper supplies, something like that in next year's to pay me back for that.
That's all part of the budget.
Yeah.
If they don't agree to go up to this other plan, it could be less than 35,000.
Absolutely.
This is like worst-case scenario.
This is worst-case scenario, yes.
That is, if every single employee chooses to stay on the current plan, the maximum difference for us is 35,088 dollars.
But you said you wouldn't, so there's one.
I, yeah, I, I do not expect to. Yeah. I mean, I, you know, my doctors are covered, I'm lucky. That's great, and I don't have any medicines that aren't part of the formulary, so that's great for me. But we do have a couple people that are, they have specialized doctors and they have specialized medicine, and that would be quite a hardship for them, so.
Well, and then maybe next year we can be more, you know, like preemptive in this and, and see about the county. See about trying to get these guys out.
No, they've already committed to a June, uh, June 1st exchange, I believe.
Yeah, good, good. I'm, I'm glad.
Yeah, the HR person over at the county's gonna, she's got it on her calendar that we're gonna start talking about it way sooner than this year.
Thank you.
So it's basically a proposal of up to?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. When do we find out the actual?
Uh, as soon as I do open enrollment at the end of this week. I gotta, I gotta go tomorrow and say, okay, it's open enrollment, we gotta get this done by Friday, 'cause in two weeks, you know, they have to have time to get that information over to Blue Care Network. We've already moved forward with setting up the plan with Blue Care Network, but I can't do the open enrollment until employees know what they're gonna pay.
So rather than approving the number, all we're doing is approving whether it's okay to have a 10% or 12 and a half percent or 15% employee co-pay? Or covered, that's probably the wrong, I probably used the wrong terminology, but.
Opposing 10%.
Yeah, employee contribution.
Kim has proposed the 10%.
Yeah.
So if we're ready, I'll make a motion to approve the change in employee contribution in the amount of 10% as presented by the Human Resource Manager.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Thank you for all your hard work on this, Kim.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we request a five-minute recess?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we will take a quick five-minute recess.
We had a kid here before, a young man.
Okay.
All set, okay. Sorry, everybody, that was a little more of a ten-minute recess than a five-minute recess. We overestimated our ability to get through the building and get back. We are back and we are ready to tackle action item number eight, which is the request for approval of the closed session minutes from November third, 2025.
I want to use my copy as the final permit.
So, Mr. Chair, if the minutes are approvable in their current form, we can do that in open session. If any of the members of the board want to discuss the content or question any substantive parts of the minutes, then we would need to go to closed session to discuss them openly.
Okay. So.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The minutes of the closed session we just read.
Is written, okay.
Is written.
I have a motion, I have a second. I am going to ask Clerk Susie for a roll call, please.
Okay, Hunt.
Yes.
Susie, yes. Hovater.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Reiber.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, minutes are approved. Moving on, discussion item number nine is to review and discuss the draft questionnaire to fill the trustee vacancy. And also discuss how we would like to go about filling that vacancy.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did put together just a short cover memo regarding this, that the appointment of trustee Rick Susie to the clerk's position now leaves a vacancy for a trustee spot. We are not in a position that need to rush to fill this in the same way that we were to fill the clerk's position, because there's no harm to township functions with a vacant trustee seat. We can continue to pay our bills and make payments. So, with that, we do have additional time. And I was trying to brainstorm ways to help the board consider and review candidates. And so, one concept that came to me was the idea of a questionnaire that we could use to ask those interested in serving as a trustee to complete. And so, I've put together what I'm going to call a very long, extensive list of questions, because in my view, it's sort of easier to throw everything at the wall and take things away. So, I'm seeking tonight just some feedback on whether or not you like the idea of using your questionnaire, if there are any questions that you feel should be added or eliminated, any way to simplify it. And then, any thoughts you have on the best process for narrowing the list of candidates once we get completed questionnaires? So, with that, I will open it for your feedback. I did also provide, just for your knowledge, some guidance from the Michigan Township Association about the rules and regulations associated with filling a vacancy, just for your benefit.
It is a lot.
Well, and also.
But it's all very important.
There are a lot of great questions. I think we can shorten it a bit, but is there anything that anyone feels we have missed that they would like to know?
I think the reference thing is a good idea.
Now, which is that?
The last.
References.
References at six.
Yep. I would think that that would be absolutely critical.
Yeah, like, we could look at it and come back to you next week, or whatever it is, two weeks. Or you want to go right away.
Well, I'm really hoping so. While we do have more time, it's forty-five days from the time that the position was vacated. So, technically, we only have until December eighteenth. We do have a board meeting December fifteenth. So, my thought process was hopefully to be able to take your input, refine the survey, and maybe get it out later this week and leave sort of a week for people to apply. And then, that would give time to analyze the results. One idea that I've thought about for analyzing the results would be to sort of create a blind, a blind format application or questionnaire that would remove the names and the details of the person that's applied, and then giving the board sort of a rubric to grade each potential application or questionnaire that comes in. So, each of you could individually sort of assign a point system, which I would help prepare to the different, you know, parts of this questionnaire. And then, we could use that to narrow the list of people to be considered. And then, if the board wanted to either set up a small group to sort of reduce the candidate number or to do something at, you know, the board table to do interviews, I would be open to whatever your suggestions are in that one.
I love that idea, so that each of us can kind of score ahead of time. Then we'll see how many we have. If it is too many, I think however many, obviously not more than three of us, possibly try to even bring it down even more before it gets to this table.
A big issue will be, I, you know, I can guarantee you, we will get more applications for this position than we got for the clerk position. No way to know how many. But there is probably a certain number where you're going to need to pare it down to a manageable amount before you bring it either to this board or to a committee. I believe.
Ultimately, it will be at this board.
This board will absolutely approve it. I don't think we want to parade forty people in here if we get forty applications to do interviews. I think there needs to be a mechanism to pare that down. And I do like the idea of removing the name and just rating a non-name from how they've replied to whatever questions we settle on in the questionnaire. To narrow it to either three, five. I'm not super comfortable going a lot more than five.
So, I have a question. Kelly did on page forty-two of our packet here. I'm looking at the next to the last paragraph. It says, "If the township board wishes to conduct interviews, they must be done in open session at a township board meeting." Okay, so that's a time factor. That's a calling of a meeting, that's sitting people down and asking them questions, interview back and forth, public in the background. I like that, I like that. But I'm interested in expediting the process of filling this vacancy. You know, this is like having representation and part of your representation is gone. It's just missing, that's another point of view. It's another yes or no vote up here on the board. So, whatever, I, I mean, if there's a way to expedite this, I would rather not wait to the last second and start interviewing people in public, whether they be special meetings or whatever, to get this thing going, to fill that vacancy as quickly as possible. And, and, and I'm, I'm, I don't know that there is a job description for trustee. We have three responsibilities really as a charter township. So, you know, when I apply for a job, I see what their qualifications are, what you're looking for, and then I go and sit in front of a bunch of people and explain why I match every single one of those bullet points.
No, a true qualification needed is that you're a qualified voter in Genoa Township.
And you want to be a trustee.
And how much does a special meeting cost?
Well, that's a good point.
Special meetings are about fourteen hundred dollars.
I'm cognizant of that fact. But I mean, if we have, what, a meeting on December fifteenth and we have a meeting December first.
December first.
We have two meetings.
Correct.
And in one of those meetings, I propose we do do, this is me, I propose that we do do public interviews at a meeting. Now, maybe it's a long meeting.
Now, let's weed some of these people out then. There has to be some criteria, right?
Right, and that's what Kelly was kind of implying. If we get fifty applications, we can't sit here and best board.
We have to pare down to finalists, I believe.
Do you have any idea what happens over here?
I'd be in favor of, and I don't care what three, it doesn't have to be me.
Fifteenth meeting be like.
There's a committee of three kind of trying to dwindle them down after each of us score all of these as they come in.
Special assessments.
It would prevent us from forming a quorum, but it would still be probably or possibly a consensus.
Joe's gonna say something.
Well, I'm gonna say, if you go that route, the committee would make recommendations.
Right.
But ultimately, you can follow that recommendation or you can choose somebody.
Of course.
Not, because it's still the board's.
Of course.
I think the, I think the intent of the committee would be to pare it down to, these are the three recommendations we have. Let them present their argument to the board, and then we vote on them.
Three seems a little small, but, three seems a little.
Well, I'm saying something different. I mean, you can make your decision, but I think you, you can't delegate to just three people. We're eliminating, let's just say there were fifty people, eliminating forty-five from consideration. That's this.
Can't do that.
Yeah, they can make recommendations.
Of course.
You can follow it or not follow it. But they can't make a decision.
Agreed. I'm just looking for them to scale back. How many, so we don't have to sit to an interview fifty people? If we say we get that many, we might not only get half a dozen.
And what I'm saying is.
So then we bring half a dozen in.
They don't make the determination as to who you interview. They can make recommendations as to who you interview.
They could say, here's all the stuff we reviewed, and we like these three the best. Here's all the stuff.
Yes.
Let us know if you want to bring anybody else.
That's what you're trying to get.
But that doesn't prevent, that doesn't prevent another board member saying, well, you didn't consider this one, I want him to be here.
And then, we'll put them there.
Right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, we could say you get five minutes to talk. Or the exchange or whatever is going to be eight minutes or something, right? We can come up here to limit the time.
It wouldn't be a call to the public, so it would not be constrained by time.
It wouldn't be that? It wouldn't be just an interview thing?
The other.
It wouldn't be a call to the public.
Potential way. Joe, if I could pick your brain, would it be improper for each of us to review all of the applications and each of us bring forth a person we nominate?
You know, that's certainly a way of going also, absolutely.
That way, nobody's eliminated, but we haven't done anything behind closed doors that, that, you know, people didn't get to see.
If everybody sees the same, you know.
Yeah, everybody will see, whatever the questionnaire we approve is the final questionnaire. That is what, everybody will be boiled down to that.
Questionnaire, resume, we all review them. We each put our recommendation into who we want. That becomes the pool.
That we interview.
That we interview.
Okay.
And some might be the same.
It's kind of going against what he said.
No?
Because it would be a small group of us making a decision for the whole of us.
No.
No decision being made.
It was, it was, everybody review, everybody.
I'm able to weed people out.
Everybody reviews them all.
Yeah.
You pick the person you think would be the right candidate, that's your recommendation, that would be the person who's going to interview in front of all of us. Bill picks the person he feels is best qualified. That's the person we're all going to interview. So, it doesn't eliminate anyone, just takes your best.
What if somebody has like two strong candidates? I would say pick your top three.
Well.
Because somebody's going to duplicate, hey, I thought that lady too.
We, we may settle, one or two of us may settle on the same person or we may have seven different people. In which case, that at lea, excuse me?
Six?
Six different people, and that at least caps the total number of interviews that we need to do at six.
Max.
Yeah, and maybe if two people agree on the same person as the person they want to put forth for the position, then you may only interview five. I'm open to suggestion.
And I think, you know, I'm thinking right now.
Yep, nope. Absolutely, I mean, if anyone else has any bright ideas, we're all for it. We've never filled a trustee position before, any of us don't have experience. Robyn has.
We did, but we all got along back then, so.
We get along, we just occasionally have differences of opinion, that's all.
So, everybody, do understand, everybody would have the same packet of information.
You would get all, however many survey questions or however many surveys we get back, each of us gets the entire stack. The people can say whether they want us to reach out to them or not. We can pick, we can reach out, we can pick, you know, we can reach out to them, decide who we think is our choice to be the nominee.
I think, you know, you'll have a lot of people that'll apply, but if, with the, with the questionnaire the way it is right now, a lot of people eliminate themselves because they're not going to go through fourteen questions on one topic.
I would almost, I agree with you, Rick, but I would almost try to build from your questions. This is a requirement, this is a requirement. You must attend meetings, you must go to trainings, these are going to sometimes be on weekdays. You must be able to do, be called. That's right off the bat. If you don't even want to do that, forget about it, don't even apply. And then, maybe some questions and said, okay, if you can make it past hurdle A, and you think you can cut the mustard, how do you think about these things? And one of the questions I was thinking was, everybody knows we vote a lot in this, so, you know, what's your voting record, are you a regular voter, because you're going to be here? Or do you have a problem voting? And I think, Kelly, you might have had something in here. Do you have a problem being a minority vote? Does that destroy your personality or something like that? How do you handle?
Being on the wrong end of a vote.
Being on the wrong end of a vote, yep. But I think, you know, we need to have somebody that's not afraid to be the lone wolf, if that's the way it is.
I, a couple of years ago. Couple of years ago, I was asked to be on a board of directors of a nonprofit here locally, I won't mention the name. But I said, sure, that sounds good. And they sent me their packet of information and their requirements for being on that board and what was involved and how much involvement it would take. And I said, ooh, I don't have this much time, so I withdrew that, you know, as opposed to saying, sure, you know, we're going to have some sure people here that will say, yeah, I'll do that until they figure out what's involved.
I'd love to tell you, I could predict the number of people we'll get applying for the job, but I do not have any idea. However, I do think it will be greater than the five that reached out regarding the clerk's position. And we will, you know, it is going to be made very clear to them that, you know, this is only your seat until next November, and you're running for the two-year, you know.
Around in August.
So, how are we gonna, like, say you got a big pile of these? It's like, am I going to have them for a night, then him, like that?
No, we'll all get a. We'll make copies, we'll all get our own stack of how many they're on.
Yeah, well.
No, you can get it by email.
Like, three of us could meet at one time and sift through them and then.
Get them by email.
We can, but Joe has some concerns with that, that technique.
I really discourage.
You could rate them.
I really discourage, you know, three people and then more than, you know, then there's another three people and all of a sudden now you have essentially a quorum.
And encourages going around the horn.
Correct, and so, yeah, I'm frowning on that.
We don't have to worry about a stack of paper, because we, like, email.
No, but that's, look at all the scanning and blah, blah, blah. It'd be more fun to just talk about it and look at them.
It goes pretty quick, we got, we bought some good scanners.
Right, 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 all right, whatever, okay. We should do something, yes.
I, I'm conceptually okay with, you know, each of the board members making their recommendations. My only concern is if four people recommend one, and it's the same person, that calls into question, you know, what's really going on, so I would suggest.
All they're doing is recommending who comes in for the interview, though.
Correct.
And then, that interview will happen here, and then, just like the last time, there will be motions. If motions pass, motions pass, if motions fail, motions fail.
And I would suggest just to make it more than just, you know, one person.
I would give the option to, you know, say a single person or one or two, right? So, I mean, there may be just one that people say, this is that, this is the one I like, but if, I don't want to prohibit somebody from suggesting someone else if they're conflicted between candidate A and candidate B. So, I think we leave it sort of loose, that if there is a single that rises up to the top for you, go right ahead, but if you've got.
So, you're suggesting two people, you recommend two people.
One or two.
I don't think one's enough.
Your A category and your B one.
One or two. I, you know, I, I'm anxious to see how many people truly apply. I don't think we're going to have a stack of papers like this.
I don't either.
I mean, I think we're going to be lucky if we get a dozen.
Especially if they saw the earlier meeting.
True.
Scam, I don't.
Okay.
Well, I hope we do.
So, what was it then? Everybody's going to get a stack, everybody's going to put their opinion in on the, this is my number one, this is my number two, I give my number one two points. I give my number second one point. Or does everybody say, you know, and then, all right, which, who got the most points?
Well, no, all that is, is determining who comes in for the interview. That's not picking the actual nominee. One or two, maybe you, maybe you have one that you're married to, you know.
The six people that get the most recommendations come in for an interview.
No, everyone.
You think.
But I think there's going to be.
No, I'd like to have everyone.
No, I think there's going to be a lot of similarity, quite frankly. I think that if we're looking at qualification of candidate, you may not know them, I may not know them, but I liked what they say on paper and with how they answered the questionnaire. We say, yeah, I want to see this guy, you know, and it could be the same person. We don't know who they are, unless you already know who, who you want for the position, that's a different story, you know.
So, then I would also suggest then, I like looking at, I don't like yes or no's answer. Do you like this? Yes, you can have a, fifty percent of the people, you know, are going to say yes. I like the questions more where they have a sentence. Describe what your goal is as a trustee. I think I could get to learn more about that person.
Most of these are question or statement oriented?
Well, I'm saying, we can, we can whittle some of these things down.
Well, you got till Wednesday, so get on it.
Okay.
Well, and I, I really appreciate feedback here tonight, because I wouldn't, I would hate to remove a question that one trustee wants and then find out the other trustee.
Also, do it right now.
So, I really was hoping to get some input tonight.
All right, all right, all right.
I know just myself, when I reread the questionnaire, I feel like there's some duplication in section five, which is on page forty-six of your packet. Questions twenty-two, twenty-four. in section five, which is on page forty-six of your packet, um, questions twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-five are, are sort of similar.
Sometimes similar questions are a good thing.
I'm just gonna write it on the script.
True.
Like one, I like like one and one, or whatever, right? Is that what you want?
Yes.
All right, well.
I have some questions I think, in my opinion, we can just eliminate.
Okay.
I don't think it will sway my opinion, yes or no, if the person answers. Number six, have you participated in the active master plan survey?
That's, oh, I'm back.
I don't think that that should be.
We accidentally have two number sixes, but, and two number sevens and two number eights, but that's okay.
Okay, it's section one, number six.
Yep.
Oh, I see.
Um.
And that question is, is asked again.
But do you think, are we comfortable with somebody being a board member who won't even take the time to fill out the master plan survey?
Never did, I mean, I never did, but I, I don't think that it.
Okay.
Because Kevin, you know that only, what, a certain percentage of people even are gonna go on and do that, so they've.
We're shooting for ten, but.
I know, I know, but I, I'm just looking, I don't think section one, number six, I don't think section one, number seven. Uh, I'm iffy on number eight, that's kind of important, because you need to know where your township is, but, uh, um, I think that.
Some of this is showing that you actually are, you know, like, involved.
I think these are all very important things.
Do you keep them all, Robin?
I would, the, the master plan survey, I thought I saw that twice, but.
Put a statement in there about what it is, with like the, like you gotta take a class, or whatever you gotta do, you know? And that might weed some out right there, they might think you just have to appear.
Right.
You know what I mean, that might be like, this is, this is what this entails.
If this person doesn't even want to take the time to do the master plan survey, then how much time are they gonna put into participating as a trustee?
Well, I tell you, what got me involved, I'm sorry, Rick, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that when I saw this list of questions, my comment was, uh, that I'd like to see it pared down to three questions per section, I thought it was way too much, but then it was presented to me that, uh, make them jump through more hoops if they really want the job, so, um, I, I, you know, I couldn't tell you what those three questions were, but I just thought pairing it down a little bit, I thought it was a little much, but, and they're all good questions.
They're all good questions.
They're all good questions.
I like it.
Robin's in favor of leaving it the way it is.
I am. Bill, Bill has some concerns about six, seven, and that's, that's legit.
I'm making some notes here for her.
I know, that's, but Robin's saying she likes it all, so, yeah, go ahead and say what you want to say.
Go ahead, Candy, but I, I would also like to.
I read my packet earlier.
I did too, but I didn't know we were supposed to do this.
Not tonight, yeah. I, I, I think that we should put a question in there, uh, because this person understands that they are gonna have to run for office again in a year.
Yeah.
Something related to the effort.
If they want to keep doing it.
Right, I'm, I'm not after hiring somebody that's just a one-year person, I want somebody that's gonna put the effort into going for the other two years.
Absolutely.
So.
And then four after that, if the voters approve.
Yeah, so maybe a question, do you understand what the, you know, the time commitments and financial to run for office?
Agreed.
They'll get, they'll get out of it cheap the first time, but the second time won't.
So, like a secondary question to section three item number seventeen, um.
Yeah, that addresses the, you understand that.
This is temporary, depending.
It's up to reelection in two thousand twenty-six.
You'd rather reword it to, um, are you willing to
if you like, want to keep this up.
Run for reelection in the twenty-twenty-six primary for a two-year term?
August primary.
You're appointed.
That sound better to you?
Yeah, with all of the time commitments and financial.
I agree. Okay, did you catch that?
It costs money, you gotta be able.
Well, they had a question, or make it a two-part question?
Two-part question, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, leave the, do you understand, and then are you willing to seek reelection? Do you, do you plan to seek reelection in twenty-twenty-six? Nobody can guarantee what they're gonna do in the future, I mean.
Well, Candy, on references, it says optional, are you saying take the word optional out there and for them to list references?
I, I don't know, what do you think?
Well, you would want to mention if you like the idea of references.
No, but I, I sort of thought it was good, but then we'd have to call them, and then ask their people, like.
I say we put, leave the word optional in, and the people that do list references, maybe get a little extra cred.
Okay.
And you know the references are gonna lead, and people are gonna say great things about them, so that's.
Right.
That's the one thing about references, you know, so.
How can you check out the references if you don't know their names?
Oh, that's a really damn good question, Joe, he's a great guy, but.
You're not gonna be glad.
Any other guidance for Kelly about the questions?
Well, Joe just made a great point, how, how are references gonna be a thing if we don't know their names?
So, w- once we've got the recommended pile of those people, then I believe the redaction would come off, right? If we've got, um.
There's a redaction on the.
If candidates A and F and D become the top of the pile, then I think we eliminate the redaction for those individuals. We reach out to them, let them know that they've been selected.
Final cut, the next step.
And that they need to show up to an interview at the board.
Cool.
Yeah, like what it entails, like, a little bit of detail at the beginning. I like it. Here you go.
Candy, what questions did you want to eliminate?
I don't know, I just wrote some random ones I thought were important.
Oh, oh, ones that are important.
So these are key?
Yeah. But I think a statement of what it is to be a trustee, the time commitment involved, that it is only short-term, I would do like a, a paragraph at the beginning, like, give the gist of it, and then ask them some questions at the bottom, and once they read through that, they might think, I don't think so.
So that, that's an alternative way of doing it that would reduce the number of questions, so creating a sort of an introduction that talks about that this, the time commitments for this position, um, we could definitely do it, instead of it being a question format, just put out there, these are the, these are the rules and responsibilities.
These five things are given, that's, that's just it.
What this means, this ends at whatever date, if you want to continue on.
To continue, go down the list, if you can commit to that, go down the list.
Yep, then you're gonna have to, you know, run again, that means filing paperwork with the clerk.
Maybe that, maybe there's just a simple, like, do you agree with all of the above? So then they need to answer if they accept that, those terms.
We're gonna be lucky if we get any.
Well, and that's my other concern, is we, we do have to fill this position, and I don't want to make it too onerous of an application.
I'm gonna scare, scare everybody away.
Well, just play with it for a minute, I mean, you can, you know, just, what do you think?
I can, I'm not hearing a lot of pushback, so if the, if sort of the direction I was headed is good, and if the board trusts me to move forward with
Yep.
a revision that simplifies it, but still meets this same tenor.
I think so, it's good.
I think it's very thorough.
Thanks for your hard work on it.
Absolutely. Okay, um, Kelly, you're comfortable with the direction we have provided?
Yes, as long as the board understands that you're trusting me to make these revisions, and.
And you'll probably send it to us, won't you, then we can say, yeah, that's perfect, or not, or you want just one of what you got?
I, I can, we're limited by time, but I can definitely.
Well, then just do that, whatever seems best.
For a filling up?
Yeah.
I don't care.
Is December fifteenth gonna be?
We, we, we have to vote on December fifteenth, or we have to call a special meeting for the eighteenth.
If there's gonna be a board decision as to the questionnaire, it's gotta be made at an open meeting, it can't be by way of email.
Okay.
On the questionnaire?
If it's a board decision as to yes.
But.
The board's decision is to move forward with a revised questionnaire, asking the board for feedback on the revisions, is that?
I'm okay with asking for feedback, but not, do you approve, this is the final form?
Understood.
That has to be in an open meeting.
Understood.
Oh, so you wanna, we won't leave it in for a while.
Or maybe we have the admin committee approve. Or not review, but.
Admin can approve it?
Yeah, the admin, to approve what, the questionnaire before it goes out?
The final format.
I'm comfortable with that, if they, you know, the board says, yes, they want a, a questionnaire, and they want to cover these topics, and, you know, they delegate to the, the admin committee, the final version, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm real hesitant to exchanging emails amongst the board members as to what should be in there, that causes some consternation.
Well, that sounded like everyone's pretty much happy with what we've got in front of us, so.
Just refine it, simplify it.
Make a motion to delegate it to the admin committee.
Well, hang, hang on a second, I, I kind of ninety percent agree with you, I mentioned it, Candy mentioned it, and I think we, we all suggest, here's the minimums, you're gonna do this, the rest of it is all questions, okay?
Yeah, like, the idea that you have to run again is, is not a question, it's a statement at the beginning of the survey.
Like, like a bullet point, or either like a sentence?
Yep.
Then we can move this through quicker.
And they know that they have to be a resident of Genoa, they have to be a registered, but they know these basic principles.
We'll make sure and.
Okay, so that, that's rule one, minimum.
Yep, no, absolutely, qualifications are, you must be a qualified voter in Genoa Township. You must be aware that this position is only until next November, and then you will run next November, you do, you, you may have to, you may get primaried, you may not, don't know. Uh, well, you would be on the ballot, but you may be on a post, but don't, don't know, but at the very least, you'll be running again in Novi- you know.
Yep.
The, the final, however you get to the November election, you'll have to run in that. Um, and that that will only be for a two-year term, so you will have to run again in twenty-twenty-eight.
Yep.
Sure, right, that, that could, that could curb down, you know, if, if we only get five applications, then we don't have to each pick one, we can, we can have everybody come in. Um, and, and again, I, I am not comfortable calling a special meeting to apply, to, uh, appoint just the trustee, um, when we've had two meetings ahead of it.
But I, I'm, I'm unwilling to rush it, and if it costs.
Oh, I don't want to rush it.
If it costs the taxpayers, and, you know, and I'm, here I am, you know, I'm concerned about it, but this is an important thing.
Oh, absolutely.
This, this is a lot more important than some other things that, you know, have, have come, th- this is, this is representation in your local government.
Oh, absolutely.
So, if, if it takes a special meeting to get this done on time, then I'm saying right now, I'm in support of a special meeting.
Agreed.
I, I agree with Kevin, though, if, if at all possible, let's try to get it done.
I think we can get it done.
If we can.
The fifteenth is, you know, four weeks away.
We should be able to do that.
So.
Yeah.
I, you know, but we do have to get the questionnaire out in enough time to.
Do we need them all, Sean?
No, this is just for discussion.
Thank you.
To get the feedback that we seek.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Okay, Joe, uh, any concerns, comments with what we've discussed here?
This, the interview part, no.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, with what I said too, please don't exchange emails amongst yourself about who should be the app, or the trustee.
We will have a better feel for how many applicants we have on, uh, December first.
Is that gonna be the deadline?
What's that?
That's the deadline?
We can decide if that's what we want to do, do you want to make the deadline two weeks from today, which would be the December first meeting?
I want to, personally, I, I want this vacancy filled as, as quickly as possible, in a reasonable amount of time. And I'm, I'm, I don't want to wait until the fifteenth, because it, it, it's dragging our feet when we could do better, even with the special meeting.
It takes time, look how long it took us to run.
I'm, yeah, I'm getting mixed signals.
I think, I think December first, that's two weeks from now, you're already done with this thing yet.
Deadline of December one's fine.
Yep, and then we can decide on the fifteenth.
Is it legal, Joe, to put a deadline?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's all.
Does that automatically preclude?
If we, if we have five applications, they can all come in on the fifteenth, and we'll decide there, if we have forty, then we have to do our.
So like, when would they be installed, say they, we say, yep, it's gonna be, whatever.
As they take their oath after the fifteenth.
Sixteenth, like the next day, like that?
As long as they come in.
Does that meet the criteria of your timeline?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, they have to be, they just have to be appointed by the eighteenth, they don't, they don't have to be sworn in, or they do have to be sworn in?
Yeah, it has to be filled within forty-five days, Bill asked a question as to whether you can put a timeline for filling in applications, yes. I think what he's also saying is, does that preclude somebody else? You know, that's gonna be a board decision, if somebody comes in and it makes a great presentation, I mean, you're not bound to, well, sorry, you didn't file the application, I mean, you're, this board is going to make the appointment.
Okay.
All right, so to go back to the deadline.
We're going with the first, fifteenth will decide. Pretty good.
So the first, the deadline?
December first is the deadline to receive the, uh, filled-out surveys. And we will push this out on the app, on Facebook, on Nextdoor, um.
Yeah.
WHMI.
People know it's coming, it's not gonna be a big surprise, we get a lot of exposure, you'll post it, it'll be on the Nextdoor, it's not.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're going to get a large number of applicants, I could be wrong, but, and I hope they're all viable.
All right, we'll see.
I would like to have a large pool to choose from.
Quality is better than quantity.
Okay, any further questions or comments on that topic? Okay, moving on, member updates, anything exciting from our sister boards that we are involved with?
Before we get to that, uh, at our last meeting, there was a gentleman, going back through the minutes, I believe it was Jim Carpenter, he commented on his inability to delete messages in the app.
Notifications, I think.
Or, like, yeah, when we send out a notification, he can't delete it, once he reads it. Um, I contacted the app people and asked them that question, and they relayed back that when you receive a new notification, there's a little dot, a blue dot, next to that new notification, indicating that it's new. Once you read that notification, the blue dot goes away, and there's no need to be concerned about whether or not you can delete that message or notification, because it doesn't live in the memory of your phone, it lives in their cloud, so it's not eating up space in your phone. So, that's that.
I know Adam said that they periodically go through and clear out what they would consider to be times that, like, this road is closed on this day, and that sort of thing.
Just expire, um. We could do that with certain messages, there's not really a reason why we would, per se.
You're, you're closing the township office for a holiday, after the holidays pass, you can have it expire after the holiday.
We could.
Yeah, so, yeah, don't need to have it.
Some of the more informational stuff, I think, is great to have it just live there in perpetuity.
Anyway.
Archived, yeah.
Okay, good, um, then moving back, Todd, you want a update on, uh, BAFFA?
Oh, um, they, they went through, they had their garage sale, um, last Saturday. I believe they brought in, um, a little over two thousand dollars on things that they were trying to get rid of, that just wouldn't fit, or wouldn't be a good fit in their new remodeled firehouse, and, um, that was pretty much the highlight of it.
Yeah, they moved, they're totally moved out, so all operations are at the station.
Started demo on thirty-one, it's, uh.
Yeah, thirty-one is closed, the downtown Brighton station, so don't go there, um, they are out on, at the corner of Heiney and Old US Twenty-three, uh, is where the operations staff is, and they've, they've moved different, um, firefighters and apparatus to all the various stations, and Chief has a really good plan worked out to, to get us coverage, um, to get through.
They demonstrated their ability to move things around really well when the Chilton Road Bridge was closed. They had to stay away, or they had to stay ahead of that construction project and stage things, so that was, that helped their learning curve on staging things appropriately for this construction proj- project.
There was also for people, uh, concerned about the, uh, the emergency response notification system. Motorola has been out, they've evaluated the system, they believe there are some switches that are bad, that has been causing the issues with the system. They're currently putting together the plan and the cost to replace those switches and get the system fully operational, um.
VHF system?
What's that?
Is that on the?
That is, yes, that is for the VHF system, and the commissioners have expressed a, a willingness to, you know, take that up as soon as humanly possible, um, they've already approved the five towers for the eight hundred megahertz, uh, system, which has, has to do with a slightly different thing than the VHF.
Did they get the fifth tower?
The location.
The location?
Not, not a hundred percent clear, chief, yeah, um, Commissioner Rick, uh, mentioned that they were closing in on that, um, that was news to Chief O'Brien, so, um, I, I think they will, but it's funded, if nothing else, so once they get the location, that fifth tower will be up and operational, so that will give us full eight hundred megahertz coverage, which is good, that's a good thing. Um, and then, uh, they'll, they'll go on from there, Chief will continue to update us on, uh, what he feels is the progress toward having the system completely overhauled, uh, they did lock into, or were evaluating a, a full-time maintenance contract, so this doesn't happen again as well, so. Commissioners have been taking really strong actions on this, and that's good. That was BAFFA, anything from HAPRA?
We meet tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
Okay, well.
They're trying to get their stuff done, but, you know, winter's coming, so it's harder.
We'll look forward to an update next time.
They would've had a buck pole, the fifteenth, at Marion Township, whatever that is, you hang up your deer or something and see how big it is, I guess? I don't know. I don't know.
Hey!
That's what that is.
They had that.
That's what that is.
But I don't think it was probably good, 'cause it was too warm, like, I didn't hardly hear any shooting, and I live out.
I did.
Out that way, you did?
Yeah.
I didn't hardly hear any, 'cause it was so warm. So they'll probably talk about that.
Okay. I don't.
CBA doesn't have a meeting this month.
Okay, and Bill, I don't believe Planning Commission did either, correct?
No, but as a reminder, um, Lieutenant Young has got a, an officer coming out next Monday, this is gonna be the financial abuse and scam.
That is correct, we need to push that out on the socials, absolutely.
That's Monday at six o'clock.
Yes, so next Monday.
Who's, who's hosting that?
Blah, oh, good question. Oh, oh, good question, I, I did the last one, I could do this one, I've, I'm, I'm just as susceptible to scams as anybody.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem.
Somebody else wants to do it.
Coming and sitting through it, um.
I think we need to know that someone is, not just assumed, but.
Yeah, we do need to know who it's gonna be, or, I mean, between you and I, we'll get it covered, I, you know, I'm safe with that.
Good, yeah, 'cause the next one is gonna be an encore of CPR, AED, and I've already taken that one.
But either I, or I believe Rick expressed an interest, or, or, you know, if anyone else wants to become certified in CPR, I think we'll cover all the CPR classes, we'll be able to get somebody there for. I, I'm interested in attending most of the other classes as well, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with opening and closing the building.
Okay.
As of this afternoon, there were four people registered for that.
That's it? This gamble?
Four, four citizens of Genoa, there was also a City of Howell person that signed up.
You might as well let them come on in, it looks like we're gonna have trouble populating, 'cause I think that one's fifty-five, the limit's like way up there.
Yeah, yeah, for the classes, it's fifty-five. Okay, um, so that's, uh, member updates, any board comments?
Yep, I wanted to announce to the board that we did hire a, um, deputy clerk. Uh, she starts on Wednesday, she has over twenty years' experience in Michigan, uh, elections and clerk, uh, deputy clerk experience. And so that's good.
Who is it?
Her name is Pamela, um, Price Bella, Prybella. You wanna write it down, Bill, it's P-R-Z-Y-B-Y-L-A. L-A. She, um, she spent a lot of time, uh, she was the, um, uh, deputy clerk of Milford, uh, she also was election specialist in the city of Southfield, she has a lot of experience, very personal lady, and will help, help us immensely in that area. I also have another person that I put a call in today to hire as a, uh, haven't talked to her yet, but hire as a, uh, clerk assistant and election specialist, who, uh, has also twenty-plus years, uh, working, uh, as not only deputy clerk, but as a clerk. Uh, but her experiences in, most of that experience is in California, so she doesn't have Michigan law down, so that's why she wasn't considered to be for a deputy position right now, uh, but she, uh, loves elections, and she's all about election integrity and stuff, so we'll be offering her a position as well.
All right.
So we're filling the seats. Getting the help we need in that department.
Very good.
So I've got a couple things, um, my staff and I are working currently to balance the winter tax roll. And believe it or not, winter taxes are gonna be going out, they're levied officially December first. We may be ready to mail them on November twenty-sixth, so everybody can have them, just in time for the holiday, so.
Oh, joy. Merry Christmas.
Um, the other thing I wanted to say, I thought tonight's special meeting went absolutely horrible, couldn't, could not have gone worse. I think what Kelly was put through was awful, and should've never happened. I would like to propose that this board at the next meeting consider hiring an outside attorney firm to do a full investigation. I don't consider Bill's one-sided investigation legitimate. It's gonna be a lot of money for the taxpayers to pay, but I heard several comments, that's what they want.
You guys were here for that, how much was the previous outside investigation that had to be undertaken?
It was, it was a long time ago, but.
The number I remember is thirty-five, but thirty could be, I mean, it just kinda stuck out, it's not a small number. But.
I had a resident who, um, had asked about investigation and blah, 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 and said we should come together and so forth, and I said, what if we hired an outside investigator, outside firm, to come in here and do the interviews with everyone, talk to everything, and come up with a report, would you be satisfied with that result? And she says, I don't think we'd do that, I think the board can handle it, but I don't think this board can handle it, uh, effectively, especially what we saw earlier, so. I would also like to entertain that, so based on that recommendation, what I would like to do is, uh, instruct staff to find a outside firm that specializes in that sort of stuff, and, uh, maybe by the next meeting, have it on the agenda to, to, uh, to vote on that, as far as hiring someone to do that. Joe, you have a comment about that?
No, I think, yes, I think it should be an outside firm.
Right.
Yes, don't, don't look to our office to do it.
Right, thank you.
I mean.
Okay.
Should we put the burden of that on Kelly, the one being accused here?
Well, I'll be more happy to do it, you know, I just.
Yeah, we can.
Just need to.
No, we can absolutely.
Find someone that does that work.
We actually.
Why does it have to be a law firm, can't it be some kind of investigative group?
Well, that may be what it is, I don't know who it's gonna be, I don't have anyone in mind for that.
I don't either.
You know. We just look at what.
Typically, it is a law firm, but if there is an investigative agency that can do it. Uh, if you guys wanna provide a name, we're welcome to listen. Uh, I would just say it'll be Robin, myself, and Rick, will coordinate a list for you to choose from, I can't guarantee you how many people we're gonna get, but let's say we shoot for three quotes on this.
Hopefully, we get a proposal.
And let's hope we can get it for the December first meeting.
Maybe.
I, I do agree with your, uh, assessment, and I apologize for my role in that, I should've been calmer, but.
Well, I don't wanna continue to do this every meeting.
I do not either.
And have this boardroom with people yelling at us, I mean, this is horrible, I was really hoping we were to a point where we were moving in the right direction, where we could actually work together and run this township, and we are far, far from that.
We work for everybody in the township, not just the people that voted for us, and this is the people's house, and that is what's right. And we do represent twenty-one thousand people.
That's twelve.
Huh?
Yes.
And not just the handful of noise makers. And I'm not being disrespectful with that, I'm just pointing out the fact that there are people that show up and voice their opinion, but we can't take that as the, as the voice of the whole community.
Anyone who has strong feelings either way, supervisor at genoa.org, reach out and let me know.
Note, um, if you go on to our website and try to click on email after everybody's name, that doesn't work, it hasn't been working for several days.
Oh, our links are messed up, okay, we will let, uh, Adam know. Well, link's not working. Okay. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Bill.
I'm ready to go home. Oh, she's checking it.
I don't think I have any email client installed on this computer, so I'll have to check from a computer that has email installed.
Yeah, we'll see if we can get that working with her, huh? Absolutely, but, uh, mine is super easy, supervisor at genoa.org. Rick is clerk@genoa.org, also pretty easy to remember, so. With that, I would entertain, uh, a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Come here, I'll do me.
No. We stand adjourned at eight thirty-five PM.